In Dallas, if I could please ask for that. Thank you. We'll also have an introduction to make there. City Manager Dave Hansen.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council, and all those watching today. I would like to introduce our newest Deputy City Manager, Ken Chandler, joining us to replace Cindy Curtis, who retired, as you know, about two and a half months ago. So I'd like to welcome Ken. And I'd also like to thank our HR Director Regina Hilliard for filling that slot and coming up here to Building One and taking all those additional responsibilities that are necessary.
Well, thank you. Regina, thank you for doing the great job in the interim. We appreciate it very, very much. And Ken, just want you to know, this is the greatest city in the world. And that's the way it is, okay? And we're keeping it that way. All right. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and get started with the City Council briefings. I am going to rearrange our presentation, just for your information, so people know ahead of time. We're going to start with the Human Rights Commission, then go to the police, then the repetitive losses, and we will save the arena for the last presentation. Okey dokey. Cliff Rice, we welcome you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you all for inviting me.
We're glad you're here.
It's been a tough, tough few days, I think, for just about everybody in the city and everybody around the country. And I've had the opportunity to talk to so many people about these issues that are going around in our country. And hopefully, we'll be able to, through this city, get through it with less of a controversy that some of the cities are going through right now. But I'm here today to give our annual report for the Human Rights Commission. And I think all of you should have gotten a pack, packet. If you did not, it would certainly be available to you. Now, you know that the Human Rights Commission acts as advisor to the City Council and continues to advocate for human rights for all people in Virginia Beach. If you look at our Homeless Awareness Week, we started with that early today, early back there. And the Human Rights partnered with the Volunteers of America and Housing and Neighborhood Preservation to host the annual Homelessness and Awareness Week. The Human Rights Commission collected donations of new or used lightweight washable blankets and socks and other articles for people struggling with homelessness. We also went into our Interfaith Dialogue this year. The Human Rights continues to be an active advocate and partner in promoting inclusive educational dialogue with people of all faiths. Standing Together Statement, launched by the Virginia Center for Inclusive Communities, was signed by several members of the Human Rights Commission. The statement calls for community to speak out and stand with the Muslim community and others who felt marginalized. The Standing Together Hampton Roads Community Event was held on January 24th at the Slovo Library in Norfolk. The group, The Sultans and the Saints, born out of the Human Rights Commission conversation shovel years ago, continues to meet and promote religious education and understanding. Through our Resolutions and Proclamations this year, Refugees Revolution, adopted by the Human Rights Commission on November 12th, 2015. The Resolution acknowledges all refugees and displaced people worldwide and calls for government agencies of all levels to create a welcoming environment by treating all who seek asylum with dignity and respect. Also, the proclamation in honor of the 25th Anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. This affirmed the city of Virginia Beach's commitment to upholding the rights of persons to fully participate in the area of society, free from discrimination and prejudice. We also sent out many letters to the City Council this year, support for our school board adding sexual orientation and gender identity as protected classes to their existing policy. We've sent a letter supporting the expansion of the full day of kindergarten. We also endorsing and let's endorsing the Let's Open Doors program and requesting that the mayor issue a proclamation in support of the 25th Anniversary of Americans with Disability Act. As you know, we also supported the light rail expansion in Virginia Beach based on the human rights implications. And this was basically done in the hopes to serve the seniors who wish to remain in their own community rather than segregated facilities. It was also, we felt that it was vital for people with low income, people of color whom own fewer cars and tend to live further away from live and wage jobs. We also felt that it was important, that light rail was important to improve mobility for people with disabilities, many of whom are not able to drive, and to protect personal mobility and freedom for people from every walk of life by improving citizen access to education, employment, housing, and health care. We also had our annual retreat, and that was held February 19th at the Office of Economic Development. This was an eight-hour retreat and was intensive planning. And it was a day, I can honestly say it was really one of those days that I, I think we all came out of there with great ideas, not only great ideas, but feeling good about the services that we're trying to do and commit. And I think we thanked everybody for showing up, but not only that, we thanked the City Council and the mayor for their support in making, in helping us get through all these programs that we do. The Human Rights Commission hosted the Virginia Association of Human Rights Annual Meeting. This conference was held on June 3rd, 2016, at the Virginia Beach Oceanfront Hotel. The conference was attended by 27 commissioners from across the state of Virginia. There were three, three plenary sessions. One was on body armor canvass for police. The other was a plenary on True Islam by the Muslim Integrity and discussion about Civil War monuments and war remorials. Community action. At the suggestion of the Human Rights Commission, the Virginia Beach Police Department announced the appointment of Sergeant Michelle Shelley Meister of the first, as the first Virginia Beach Police LGBT liaison. And that was, I believe that, yeah, that was May 11th this year. We had talked about this before, and we know that some of the police departments were involved in trying to have that type of liaison. We spoke to, I spoke personally to Chief Severa and others, and this particular individual was selected to be a liaison between that group, and I think it's working out very well. Citizen advisory committees, well, in years past, the Human Rights Commission has served as both welcoming ambassadors and observers during our traditional, traditionally been known as College Beach Week, or Week. And that was April 17th, this, yeah, Week 17. That was April 22nd to 24th. We had five diverse teams, including seven civilians, five human rights commissioners served as welcoming ambassadors and observers. And we had a written report, we sent the written report to City Council to follow up on that. And I must say that this year was very, very, very low-keyed. We had a pretty good turnout. There was some controversy, and I think we still feel that there's a few things that we need to do down there. But I think, for the most part, it went very, very well. And if you look at this, if you have a chart in front of you, one of the objectives of the Human Rights Commission is to provide assistance to persons who believe their rights have been violated. The Commission accomplished this by identifying the appropriate federal, state, or local agency that can address the complaints and by referring other persons to the appropriate agency. There's a chart that we've showed, how many reports that we've got and how many referrals that we made. You'll see the chart has between 27 inquiries that we got this year, and we made those different, we sent those different people to, for assistance to those particular agencies. Community events, as we come to the end, the Human Rights Commission has played an integral role as leader and advocate in the effort to shape the landscape of Virginia Beach community. Members of the Human Rights Commission attended, organized, and participated in numerous events throughout the year. The Commission remains active and committed to the advancement of human rights for the residents of Virginia Beach. And let me just close by saying I want to thank my commissioners, of course. We also have our vice chair that's here as well, Father Parks, that is here. And I want to thank the Human Rights, the Human Resource Commission for their work in helping us get our programs over. But I will say this as I close, is that, as I travel around the country and observe what's going on in other police departments, I see a bright light here in Virginia Beach that was not there years ago, but the light is shining much brighter today. We've got the police officers that are being retrained in how to handle some of the incidents that are going on. I'm sort of, I'm not only sort of proud, but I am very proud to be part of it. And I, having had 40 years in law enforcement myself, my heart is a little heavy today because I see what's happening in our police department and our community. And if we're not careful, ladies and gentlemen, it can happen here. So we've got to keep our mind open, our hearts open, and be very conscious of the things that are going around with us. I really want to take this time to thank the mayor for his support for the things that I tried to do. And, and I was reappointed again. I'm not sure why that happened, but I, I will say that I'm proud of it, and I will do the best I can to make sure that the city of Virginia Beach and the citizens that don't have a voice will continue to have a voice in this city. Thank you very much.
Cliff, we thank you very much for the presentation. Questions or comments? Bobby?
Thank you. And I think I speak on behalf of Shannon that it is a privilege, you know, to be the liaisons with a group, one of the finest group of well-engaged citizens that unselfishly go about to do the right thing for so many people. You tackle initiatives that are cutting-edge, that, you know, they're pertinent today. They're difficult, but you, you address them with style and grace. And I really think that Virginia Beach is ahead of the curve in many ways. With your efforts and the efforts of our police department and everything, you know, confront, we look at the news today, I really honestly think that Virginia Beach is ahead of the curve because of your efforts. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Shannon, would you like to add anything?
I echo Bobby. When someone says they speak for me, it makes me a little nervous, but he, he-
Especially Bobby.
But he, he expresses my sentiments as well, and it is a pleasure to work with all of you and for those who aren't here as well. It's an interesting dynamic in the sense that we've got a very diverse group that sit at that table with very diverse interests and, and passions and concerns. And we overcome that. We work together as a group and collaborate and come up with the best solution for, that I feel, you know, that we can. And I think that's what it's all about, and thank you for doing that. Thank you for taking the leadership, Cliff.
If I could, I'll even take a greater risk. I'll try to speak for the whole council. And, but I feel very comfortable in doing this. I thank the Human Rights Commission for the job you've done, not just now, but over the years. Because I think it's been so critical. As you commented, you saw the bright light. Well, remember where we started, and we probably wouldn't have that bright light if we hadn't started this a number of years ago. And at the same time when I'm saying that, and I'm looking at our, our police department that's in this room and getting ready to make a presentation, I think they've been very supportive of the Human Rights Commission. And I think they've done an outstanding job as well, as far as community policing, which I believe, it's funny, and I don't mean to get going before your all's presentation, but, you know, I believe what we did with the Human Rights Commission establishing it, which was quite controversial at first, if you remember when we did it. And it, but I'm so glad that we did. And then to see how our police department has done such a very fine job over the years, especially focused on community policing. And what are we hearing across the country now, the need for that? Well, to the great leadership at the police department and to each officer on the street, we're very thankful that you're already doing it. And it's just great that we're having these few presentations today that were already scheduled, not because of what's occurring around us. But we thank each and every one of you for what you've done to really, truly put our city in a very, very good position during a very tough time. Thank you.
All right.
Wait, we have one person. Hand this up.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
No, why? Because Virginia Beach is the greatest city in the world.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
I want to say-
We're now going to go to the chief's report. You want to make the introduction, Mr. City Manager?
I'd love to. I'm so proud of our police department. I'm proud of their awareness of community requirements. I'm proud of the collaboration and the outreach that they have been engaged in over the last decade that I've known them. The transformation of policing in Virginia Beach has gone from, from being warriors to being caretakers and participants in what makes our life and our quality of life so good. So we're very proud of the statistics that we maintain and the, the data that we, that helps drive our decisions, that helps us at the city manager's level, resource to meet the demands and to equip and man and retain and recruit those fine officers that are out there every day doing their job. So with that as an introduction, I'd like to introduce the greatest police chief in the world.
Oh, God. I don't get much better than that.
All right.
So in conclusion, I'd like, we appreciate Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Hansen, Mr. McCall. We appreciate the fact that we're here today. We wanted to give you a mid-year report where we are on crime, not only on crime in a city, but in certain projects and programs that the police department has undertaken and where we are on all of these issues in order to make this the greatest city in the world. So we'll start with just the basic raw numbers. You'll notice, it jumps out at you very quickly that for the first six months of this year, we've had an increase in rape cases. We've had a slight increase in aggravated assault cases and motor vehicle theft, as well as larcenies from motor vehicle. I'll get into each one individually. Right now, our robbery rate is about 22 robberies per month for a city of our size. That is very acceptable, considering the size of our city, the number of visitors that we have coming towards our city. And we're posting about a 70, I'm sorry, about a 50% clearance rate on those robberies, which is much higher than the national average. Aggravated assaults, aggravated assault is basically inflicting bodily harm on another person. It's not just a simple assault, a punch, a kick, a push. This is one where someone uses a weapon, or a case where skin is broken, bones are broken, an assault of that nature. What's a little bit disturbing on, on our aggravated assault cases is of that total number, 25 were through the use of a firearm. We're seeing an increase, as everyone else is across the nation, in gun cases. We're not immune to that. We saw 25 this year, the first six months of this year. We saw 25 cases where an individual had a cutting instrument, a knife, a box cutter, something along those lines, and 65 cases where it was an assault with hands, feet, et cetera. The one, again, that we're most concerned with, the one that our officers deal with a lot, and I'm going to get into very heavily some of the firearms cases that we've had. We've had 25 cases this past year of aggravated assault, which were perpetrated with a firearm. And I wanted to, when we look at malicious assault cases, aggravated assault cases, we look at two things. We look at domestic and non-domestic. Not that someone getting hurt inside their home is diminished, but there's only so much that the police are going to be able to do for individuals who are inflicting bodily harm inside their own dwelling. We really like to pay a lot of attention. We pay extra attention to the non-domestic cases that we've had. And as you could see, which is readily available, about 64% of those are non-domestic. John. We also look at the crime of rape. And you will notice on there that 5% are what is classified as a stranger rape, where the victim had no idea who the suspect is. The vast majority are known, the suspect is known. We consider those acquaintance. Again, that does not diminish this case. It doesn't mean we, we work it any differently. We investigate it completely and fully. But the big difference, I think, that you need to know, or maybe the public needs to know, is that 5% of the cases are stranger cases. The rest, we have, we start from the beginning where we have an idea who the suspect is. Usually, it's an acquaintance, some type of friend. Case might have gone to a bad place very quickly. So we're able to work those fully. Do we have a question, Mr.?
What's the difference between a stranger and unknown?
An unknown would be, the victim can tell us that heavy intoxication, drug use, was it someone I knew, was it someone I don't know? They couldn't tell us one way or another. What we look for straight from, from an individual is, did you know the person? And some of those would also be an overindulgence of alcohol or drugs, but at least we have an idea. In this case, I was attacked. There were numerous people at this event, this party, whatever it's called, and I don't know exactly who the perpetrator is. Wanted to talk about our larceny cases. The one that's going to stand out is larceny from vehicle. We had a meeting out in Blackwater a couple of weeks ago because that, Ms. Henley, as you know, was one of the main issues for folks who live out in the county section of the city.
Bless you. God bless her.
And what we found in those two patrol zones of our city is what we're finding throughout the city. A lot of these cases are unlocked vehicles, or you leave possessions in the vehicle that are readily available, i.e., bless you, purses in the front seat, laptop computers in the front seat, keys left in the car, your house keys left in your car, if someone breaks into your car, and then perpetuates a burglary shortly thereafter. What we're trying to do on this is a public education campaign. If you remember, years ago, the term was lock it or lose it. Captain Squires' first precinct came up with a, a positive way of looking at this. Beep it to keep it. Everybody has a beeper on their car. Beep it to keep it. What we try to tell everybody is, I know the car's in your driveway. I completely understand that, and you should be safe with your car in the driveway, but in the world the way it is today, lock the car, beep it, and make sure there's nothing in that vehicle, no possession where a suspect would want to take it. What we're finding with these suspects is, it's not the old smash and grab like it was years ago. Some of these individuals work in teams, they work in pairs, and they have communication with one another. So if a police car enters one end of a neighborhood, they get to talk to each other and tell the suspects, just go take a walk down the street. We are working again very heavily. We have done some saturation patrols. Our best, our best defense to this is folks who beep it to keep it and also to call us when they see something. When, when we do our CompStat report every month, we look at, and the city manager always likes when, when I refer to the cops on dots. Once upon a time, when we, pre-computerization, we would read cases and we'd take a little sticky dot and put it up on a map, and then at the end of the day, we'd say, we need to put the cops on those dots. What you're seeing here is just a computer version of where our heavier violent crime density is. 227 Zone is the resort area. But remember, this is a large area. We have a lot of transient folks who live in and around the area. They come down, they stay for a couple of months in a particular location, and then they move on. So we do have cases there. We have a lot of alcohol consumption. I can tell you that of the entire area, it is not just what we consider the resort area itself. It is the entire patrol zone. And then the rest, the violent crimes that we find are off Virginia Beach Boulevard, up in the 3rd Precinct, on their way towards Town Center, Pembroke Mall area, from that area all the way up towards Baker, towards Newtown Road. And then we hone it down strictly to robbery cases. And you could see that that's where a lot of these issues are occurring. Next one. Burglaries. We look at burglaries throughout the entire city. The two particular areas that you're noticing are areas where we have a high-density population. The Holland Road Corridor is high-density, from Providence Road to Holland Road, that whole core area in there. Mr. Dyer, Councilman Dyer, your particular district has a lot of high-density. And so we get a lot of burglaries where you have a lot of high-density. But our burglary numbers, if you saw the original numbers, are low at this particular time. We will hit somewhere around 1,000 this year, where we know that in the mid-80s, we were hitting 3,500 to 4,000. So we have seen a big difference. This is just the area that we have to concentrate in. Adults and juveniles that we arrest, we put this up. The one thing that I want to, you to notice is the weapons cases. We've had 128 cases between adults and juveniles who were arrested for some kind of weapons case. That is, they're carrying concealed weapon, they're shooting a weapon, they're carrying a concealed weapon, they brandish the weapon, reckless handling of a weapon, something along those lines, 128 times in the first six months. So our officers are, are interacting with a lot of armed individuals. And I'm going to put that in its proper perspective here shortly, but I wanted you to know that the world is changing. No one's immune from the changes. And this is one of the changes that we've seen in our city. Our officers are doing a fantastic job with the revive kits. They're using them whenever they need to. We already have 26, what we call saves. We work very closely with our partners in fire and rescue. If, if our naloxone kit, if our Narcan kit doesn't work appropriately because the person's too deep into the overdose, rescue will show up, fire will show up. They have a different version than we do. Rescue could go intravenous. We don't. It's strictly a nasal spray. And we are the only police department that I know of in the state that's using Narcan. If you remember, a year ago, I told you, we stole that statement. Strong communities make police obsolete. We saw that on a sign from a young lady who was protesting at Town Center. And when we, when we spoke with her, I said, if you don't mind, I'm going to steal that idea because I think it really puts it in proper perspectives. Now, that's very idealistic. I don't think this is ever going to happen. But if we had a society where we had very strong communities, police would not be needed. We're working very heavily in all the, the areas that we're showing you. I want you to know that, as we have increases in criminal activity or increases in certain kind of activity in some of these areas, the captains will immediately call for a planned patrol, will work those sections, and we will be able to make the appropriate arrests. The idea is not just to make arrests, but it's to make goal-oriented arrests at those times and at those places that crimes are occurring. As you know, we are very heavily engaged in Western Bayside. We are also beginning to become heavily engaged in Green Run. Green Run is really a very nice community. But it's home to about 21,500, 22,000 people, so you're going to have some issues. We know that there's a lot of multifamily dwellings where we have some issues on certain streets. We're beginning to work very heavily in Green Run. You know, we look at the SeaTac Bird Neck Road Corridor, and 2nd Precinct is working heavily in that area. We have, actually, crime has been reduced in and around SeaTac, and we know the SeaTac Civic League, if there's a car that's illegally parked, we will be notified about it immediately, immediately. So our friends in SeaTac have the direct line to the precinct, and it's working because we have less and less issues in and around Bird Neck Road than we've ever had before. In recent events that have gone on around the country, we are getting a lot of, of calls from our citizens saying, how can we help? Deputy Chief Gallagher has put together a community outreach work group, and at this particular point in time, the good news is we are being flooded with calls from various neighborhoods, community civic groups, church groups, saying, we want to do something to help the police. The bad news is, we're being over 1,000- The bad news is, we're being overwhelmed with the response that we're getting from our citizens. So we're beginning to work on a lot of these, with a lot of these groups, and try to pull them all together so that we're not scattered around the city. But the bottom line is, while we've been reaching out for a number of years, what we're beginning to see is the community is reaching towards us. And that's what you want. You want the community to be able to say, how am I part of the solution to the problem that we're seeing in other parts of the country? Along with our community policing program, we, as Mr. Rice mentioned, we do now have our LGBT liaison. Sergeant Meister's doing a fantastic job in getting out to the community. And it's just another way that we could outreach to our community to be as effective as we can to various groups. And we assign a liaison because sometimes people feel more comfortable speaking to someone than they do contacting the chief of police. We could read this about the 65 bags of trash that were removed from the alleyways in one section of Western Bayside. I would like to say a little shout out to our friends at Public Works, Phil Davenport and his group. We contacted them. Officer said he had an idea to do this. And here's the beauty. This officer who initiated this program is, he was on probation, probationary officer, and when they go through their training, they have to come up with some kind of a project. He looked upon this project. He was able to put this project together, to contact the right agencies, and that's what makes our city really great. I have police officers, street-level officers contacting other departments, saying, we have an idea. We'd like you to partner with us, and things happen. Where in many other places, it has to go up and down, change the command, and by the time you get something done, it's too little, too late. In our system, officers and other city departments cross lines of authority, talk with each other, put these programs together, then they tell us what they're doing. And that's really fantastic. It's very difficult for me to keep up with all the great work that these folks are doing out on the street, in the precincts, and in the various commands. We have to talk about our College Beach Weekend. It's interesting because after this College Beach Weekend, we had a media report which talked about the number of arrests this year as opposed to last year, and arrests were up a certain percent. Please keep in mind, last year, it was a washout. It was a rain event for three days. Now, the officers did a great job going from hotel to hotel to keep everything under control, but it was pretty much a washout. Here's the beauty behind this, and I'm going to talk about this a little bit. The object and the intent this particular weekend is not to have arrests. The object and the intent is for the young folks who are coming down to the oceanfront, and there were a lot of them, that we get voluntary compliance, that we solve problems before they exist. And that's exactly what happened during this particular weekend. We had volunteers, our Human Rights Commission was walking with us. I got to give a lot of credit to Captain Adams, Deputy Chief Zuccaro, they contacted the Department of Justice, Department of Justice Civil Rights Division to come and work with. Very rarely does a police agency contact the Civil Rights Division and say, come and watch us. But that's exactly what we've been doing. The officers were handpicked for certain areas, and basically, as I like to say, for a couple of nights, they did the slow dance with the crowd. Yes, we had arrests, but with 40,000 young folks who are out all night long, it was very tame compared to what it could have been. One of the positives to this was that, go ahead, John. We heavily relied, and Julie Hill will be happy about this, on social media. Our student ambassadors were tweeting during the whole weekend. We had officers tweeting, we had ambassadors who were working the street, and these are students, that we had to assist us. So they utilized social media, most of what they were doing. I don't have a clue how to do that. That's why they were doing it. And, you know, it worked. So we're going to continue next year. Because Week 17, College Beach Weekend, it's coming back next year at the same time, the same place. Mr. Mayor, we're going to, the Boy Scouts.
Right from scout camp, four hours away.
We're glad you made it.
We will be kicking off our neighborhood surveys in September. There's one area on here that's not been listed, and that will be the entire Green Run area, where we use 1st and 4th precinct, mostly down the Lynn Haven Parkway corridor and the Rosemont Road corridors. But this is the schedule of events for our neighborhood surveys. You can see, we're doing one or two neighborhoods, we will be in one or two neighborhoods we've never been in before, and that's Prince of San Plaza, Friendship Village in Atlantis, we've never knocked on doors there. And again, the Civic League was kind of interesting, said, how come you don't come and survey our neighbors? We said, well, we have not seen an increase in criminal activity, and the Civic League basically said, we want to see you in our neighborhood, so we'll be there in Atlantis and in Friendship Village. Okay, we've, I've briefed you on CIT cases for the last couple of years, crisis intervention. These are people that are having mental breakdowns, mental episodes, as we like to say. The next slide will show you the numbers that we're working. The bottom line is, the total time that we're working these cases take up about eight FTEs. If we were to put a specialized squad of officers, that's all they did, was CIT cases, and they ran 24/7, considering vacation, sick time, training, it would mean we would have to increase the police department by a squad of 17 FTEs. That's what it would take to cover a city of our size 24/7. The eight officers that you see there, that's just the total time that all of our officers are using. So we'll go to the next slide to explain some of that. Our calls have increased. Our officers are initiating a number of calls. Our man-hours has increased. What has decreased is the average time on a call, and we have to thank our partners in human services, who are doing a fantastic job to try and keep the time that officers are waiting for hospital beds, for hospital clearances down. However, and I'm going to speak for DHS right now, in these cases that we've had over the last six or seven years, we have not seen any increase in our staffing to help on some of these cases. So we're working with human services to say, how could we get the process better so it could move quicker, so we can get the individual the help they need on a quicker basis. We thank you for the 10 additional positions. We will move four of our officers from mounted patrol into this community policing project. We will assign them to Western Bayside and to Town Center. Our next academy class will be September 22nd. We are hoping to put 50 officers, 50 recruits, in that academy class. Deputy Chief Gallagher assures me that we're going to hit that number. He assures me that on a daily basis. We are going to hopefully graduate a larger percentage. This last class, we lost about 1/3 of the folks for attrition. You know, young folks come into the academy, and after X number of weeks, they realize this isn't for them, and they move on. What we're hoping is to be able to take care of a lot of that on the front end to get them through the entire academy. Something I wanted to bring up. When we read reports on serious cases, officers will write the report, and at the end of the report, subject was armed with a gun, subject was armed with a knife, subject did X, Y, and Z. It was a foot pursuit from the scene. It was something else, a malicious assault, an aggravated assault. And at the end of the report, if we did not injure the individual, if we did not have to use deadly force, if we did not have to use a heavy amount of force, the report will end with subject arrested without incident, or suspect arrested without incident. So we like to tout some of that. You will see in the media constantly when officers have to use a certain amount of force. What you don't ever see is when they do not use that force. We've had 13 cases since January where a subject was armed with a gun, and usually, and we really looked at these close, they just didn't have a gun on them. They had the gun in hand, they were pointing, they were shooting, officers arrived on the scene. Or, and we had six other cases where a subject was armed with a knife, officers responded, used tactics and tact, and were able to de-escalate the situation, arrest the individual without incident. That's 13 times. It's twice a month we're interacting with people. It's going to a really bad place very quickly. And these young officers who are out there are doing a most fantastic job of trying to ameliorate and solve that situation without having, now, their safety is first and foremost. And remember, they have to react off of the subject with the weapon. But I just wanted you to know, and I'm hoping that our general public can understand, 13 times our officers have confronted someone where they have not had to use any kind of deadly force, and subject was arrested without incident. We capture force very in-depth. From January 1 to January 30, we had 311 incidents where we had to use some type of force on someone. The reason why it says 694 individual uses is some incidents we will have, it'll be more than one officer. For example, when a SWAT team does a high-risk search warrant, and they enter a home, they enter a home with weapons drawn. If they point the weapon at someone, in our department, you will use a use of force form. In many agencies, you don't do that. So we'll have six at that one location. So 311 times, we had to use some type of force. But the next slide really puts it in the proper perspective. We've already answered 86,000 calls for service. We've arrested close to 10,000 people. We've had field contacts with another 4,800 people. We've stopped 37,000 cars in our city, and we have written 23,000 summons. That's a lot of activity.
Six months.
In the first six months of the year. That's a lot of activity. Just the arrests alone for the first six months, and in only 311 cases that anyone have to use force. So when I keep hearing this conversation around the country about police, 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 they don't use force in the vast majority of their cases. Take that 311 number, and then look at the total numbers that we're putting up here. And I like to say calls for service because I know of no case, and I've been in the business 41 years, where anyone has ever called the police to come to their house to have a cup of coffee and a burger. You go to someone's house because things are going to bad places very quickly. You arrive at a scene of a high-stress situation. So what we also like to do is to show you, well, what kind of force are we using? The far left, that's minimal force. It's what is known as a hand-on technique, compliance control. Mr. Davenport, I put my hands on you to put the handcuffs on. That's the use of force form in our city. The vast majority, somewhere in the vicinity of 70-something percent, are on that far left of the 311 cases. So really, we have a small number of cases where officers are using a heavier amount of force to affect the arrest. We confiscated 373 guns in the first six months. Again, 123 of those came from arrests for some kind of incident where someone was either pointing or shooting a weapon, had a weapon concealed when they shouldn't have a weapon concealed, they were a convicted felon, had a weapon, and so on and so forth. A lot of these firearms, we take from other kinds of cases where they're evidence or their property that we find, or people turn over weapons. But again, that's the total number of guns that we've come in contact with in the first six months.
Questions? Well, we thank you very much for the presentation. Jim Wood.
Going back to your CIT stuff, which I think that's phenomenal considering what you end up having to do with mentally ill people. How many people are trained in that nowadays?
Oh, no.
About 250 that have received the 40-hour block of training, and the entire department has received what we call the CIT light, for lack of a better term. That's a four-hour block of training.
Are you doing that in the academy now as well?
No. What we like to do is get the officer on the street for a period of time, then bring them back so they get some experience, and then they can relate better to how quick a situation can unfold and fall apart. And also, so you know, of the officers who've been trained, we trained our entire warrant service unit because they, their job is strictly to make arrests. And we started training our SWAT team. So certain members of the SWAT team have already been trained. All of our SROs are trained.
And then two other questions. One, the arrests without incident that you guys send out your social media, it's in social media, it's on the internet, you might want to look at it. But they do a great job on Facebook talking about it. Unfortunately, the media doesn't pick it up and broadcast it because it's not bad news, but it's really good stuff that you put out there. How many vacancies do you have in the police department now?
As of today?
Yeah.
Right now? Considering that the additional officers, you're giving us 71.
You have 71 vacancies.
Out of the 806?
Out of the 806, we have 71 vacant positions.
50 in the academy.
In the academy. So we're going to have to play catch-up for the next year, year and a half. To be very honest, the number of folks who apply to be a police officer across the nation has dwindled. It's just, it's that kind of job. It's that kind of career, and the numbers have just been dwindling. We're recruiting as much as we can, and as, to quote the chief from Dallas, as he said, be part of the solution, we're hiring. Yes?
Yes, Amelia.
I was going to also tap into what Jim mentioned about that crisis intervention team, because if you have an officer who's out there, one or two, are they there just for a short time, or they have to stay with this person through the entire time?
They stay through the entire process.
So then what happens to fill that void?
We scramble to put other officers to cover zones. If you get two CIT cases during a midnight shift in a precinct, the command-duty car will have to find other resources from the other precincts to slide them over to fill some of those holes. It's very labor-intensive.
Problem.
Yes.
Taking care of CIT is so good.
John?
Observation, when you talk about the number of car stops, I don't think people, unless you ask the Commissioner of Rome to know, we have more cars registered than licensed drivers in City of Virginia Beach. So you just assume they're all on the road? That's only 204 cars a day. That's only 400th of a percent of all the vehicles, not counting tourists, that would be stopped on any given day. That's not many cars. When people think about all this stopping, it really is very small. And so I think that's a, because I think it's a conflict to what you focus on. Everything you see, you don't stop, which is smart policing. But I just, to give you an idea also, too, is that I think people, as bad as Jagger, also try to drive well, but I still think it's an interesting number to look at when you break it down by the day. It's very small.
And Mr. Moss, our focus for the last six or seven years has not been on the number of summonses we write. You write tickets all day long. It's goal-oriented tickets, it's goal-oriented arrests. And to even take that one step further, if officers can, quote, fix the situation without having to write the summons, that's fine by us.
Great job. Amelia, you have something else?
Yeah, I was going to mention how important, and I hope we say it all the time, that our first responders, especially police and firefighters, are vital to the success of this city. So we thank you for being where you are.
Other questions or comments? Chief, we certainly thank you for your presentation, and I hope you know, although it works with you, that we're very proud of each and everyone in the police department for doing the fine job they do. And we thank you for this great report. Thank you.
Okay. Severed repetitive loss program, how is this going to take about?
We're on time. I predicted he'd be done about quarter till, and we're doing great. Aaron Sutton, our emergency operation administrator, working with Steve, in Steve Cover's department, is coming on board and getting teed up here. We continue to compete at the national level for female-level grants to use federal funds and use our staff to administer a program to elevate properties that are being severely impacted by our weather events. And when they meet the qualifications, Aaron is our program manager, and joined by Mark Johnson, our operations engineer at Public Works, who is our multiple-project engineer with a staff that works diligently. We are in people's living rooms and in their kitchens, and we're raising their houses. We are in people's living rooms and in their kitchens, and we're raising their houses, but we're doing it with government employees because that's the way the federal program is. So we thought we'd give you an update because we're back in the market and we're receiving awards to continue this process.
Aaron, glad to have you, and Mark, glad to have you, too.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Today, I just want to go through an update of the overall project. We are looking at an award for Grant III. That was the, what's on the agenda for today, but this just gives you an overall update of where we are. Grant I was our learning, our learning project. It's still, we're still finishing out some issues. I'll update you on that in just a few minutes. We started with nine homes, only ended up elevating seven. We had two homeowners that dropped out of the project. Grant II, eight homes at 1.2 million. Grant III at five homes for 874,000. And then Grant IV, we just submitted the application for the next round. So we, it will be upwards of ninety days before we see that. This just gives you an idea of where we are spread across the copy in your PowerPoint, maybe a little bit easier to see, but just kind of how we're spread out. The majority of the properties that we are looking at are in Lynn Haven Colony on Bay Island, and then we have a few in Princess Anne Hills and a couple others scattered about there. Just to bring you up to speed on the grant, Grant I definitely was our longest one. We started back in 2010. We did close the grant at the end of the year, December 2015. We closed the grant out with FEMA. However, we still have some lingering items with some of the homes that we elevated that we are working with. In one of the homes, the Long Creek Home, we've had the contractor come back and fix some of the items that we had identified that the contractor could have improved on. We have also looked at a couple other items. We are still working with them to close out their home. Over on Lynn Haven Drive, they identified a crack in the foundation, and we're working with them to monitor that and make sure that that does not increase. And on Cove Road, there was some damage done to the roadway. It is one of those private roadways, and we want to make sure that we leave things in good order. And over on Goodspeed, one of the homes, we're working with them. They've got some minor issues of settling, but primarily, they just want to make sure before they start their internal renovations that no more settling is going to occur. So we are working very closely with the homeowners to rectify the issues with their properties. And this, just a snapshot, again, the PowerPoint give you a little bit better indication, but these are the homes that we elevated in Grant I. So in Grant II, we applied for the eight properties back in September of 2013. It took a full year for FEMA to turn around the approval of the project and get the notification out to us. We have received the, we decided to break the project up into two geographical locations. So we have five homes on Bay Island, and we have three homes in Lynn Haven Colony. So we are breaking up that project. So the hundred percent drawings are complete for the Bay Island project, and hopefully we are getting it out to bid in the next thirty to forty-five days. This gives you the information on eight homes at 1.2 million. And we have also offered the five-year promissory note for these properties due to the, when we submitted the grant, we submitted the grant based on our previous experience of shallow-spread footings. These homes on Bay Island are requiring helical piles. When we went back to ask FEMA for additional funding, they declined. And so we went back to the homeowners and asked them if they would like to stay in the program, and they will be making up the difference. And upon discussion with Mr. Hanson, we were going to offer the five-year promissory note for the increase of cost for those. So we wanted to separate the homes into the two geographical locations because on Bay Island, if you've been there, the space is very tight. Four of the homes are on Canal Road, and if you've been on Canal Road, having four contractors or even two contractors working in the same geographical location, there's not enough space. So we did break it up that way. And these are the five homes over on Bay Island, one on the main road, and then the four on Canal. And then we have three over in Lynn Haven Colony that, once we get the first project for Bay Island out to bid, we will begin working on completing the hundred percent drawings for the Lynn Haven Colony project. We don't want to wait until Bay Island is complete, but we will be, we want to get that one out to bid and working with a contractor. So Grant III, which is what we have on the agenda today to accept the award from FEMA, we were notified in May to apply. We submitted for five properties. We utilized, again, the benefit-cost model of a flat $175,000 per property, which is what we did for Grant II and Grant III. The reason there were only five homes, because that was the last of the homes that we could do with the 175,000. We received notification in January, and today, we're working with, to get council approval, to receive the $875,000. There are five homes approved for this project. We completed feasibility studies. That was one of our significant lessons learned on the first project. We want to make sure that it is feasible to actually lift these properties, that we will not do more damage than, excuse me, more damage in lifting the house than leaving it as-is. The feasibility studies are covered by the grant. The grant does offer pre-award costs, and we factor that into the application. So we have the three homes in Lynn Haven Colony and the two other homes, one over on Wake Forest and one over in Windsor Woods on North Gate Court. And that's just a bit bigger picture. You can see the three grants, the grants that we have been awarded thus far and how they're spread out. So the fourth grant, just to give you an update, we got notification, we received notification in February that there was about a hundred and, just under $200 million available in flood mitigation assistance. So we met with Mr. Hanson to move forward in looking at another application for houses to elevate. We had gone through all of the houses that would qualify for the straight $175,000 benefit-cost analysis. So we had to go through and calculate with FEMA's formula on which homes would qualify for this project. And based on this, we identified nine homes for the application at 2.9 million. We got a benefit-cost analysis of 3.31. One of the biggest things that we identified in the past, we had used a repetitive flooding model in the FEMA formula. We switched that and used elevation, and since most of our homes are very much below base flood elevation, that gave us very high benefit-cost analysis for this project, which bodes well in getting awarded. I was just at the floodplain conference, and the priority at this point is still elevating severe repetitive loss properties. So in putting the application together, just so you are aware, the city is allowed to set the parameters with which we identify the properties that we want to elevate. So we looked at locating within the A-zone, under 3,000 square feet, had at least $50,000 in claims, and was a primary residence. That is one of the things that we have been, and the severe repetitive loss program is adamant, is that we look at primary residences and not secondary homes. We sent letters out and received responses, and we received the nine had qualified, one did not, and one had already elevated his property, which we love to see that people are taking initiative. You can see in your packet, this is difficult to read up here, but just so you can see where that 2.9 million dollars in the pre-award costs are in there that cover the engineering, the feasibility studies, excuse me. And so we used $108 per square foot because this time, we factored in helical piles. Not all of these homes may need helical piles, and we would rather err on the side of what we have found over doing these last several grants that we are, we put in for the $108 a square foot. We did put in displacement costs, and then we have the feasibility study cost. This grant is a hundred percent reimbursement, so it covers the work that we're doing. So these are the first four homes. The next set of homes. And you can see where they're spread out across the city. And that's all I have on this project.
Any questions?
Not to answer today, but I'd like to know what the before and after, because I know they may not have, you know, aftermarket commercial insurance, flood insurance.
But it'd be interesting to know, if there's a way to get a proxy, is what would they pay nowadays in elevation, what's the difference?
So just to give you an example, just to give you an example here in Grant I, so I know for a fact that this home here, thank you, this home here was upwards, just north of $2,500 in flood insurance. They're now down around $400.
That's the federal insurance.
That's for the National Flood Insurance Program. And that's about what we're seeing in the drop in the flood insurance rates is to about around $400. Some of them were paying around $1,200 per year, and some of them had reached up to almost $4,000 per year. And the houses in the later grants, we're seeing upwards of $3,000, $4,000, and $5,000 of annual costs for flood insurance. And so doing this project is lowering their insurance down to the hundreds. So it is making a significant change in their annual payments.
Add to that, this owner added $100,000 in improvements beyond the elevation, and Mr. Bannigan has visited her quite rapidly, and we just, we just got some awards, and we're very proud of the fact that we don't buy properties and demo them and turn them into just unused lots. Can't even partition them and sell them like we do in Oceana Gardens on our BRAC program to our adjoining neighbors. So this program is quite difficult. There are some elaborate financing schemes that, when the bids come in above what the feds give us, we go back to the homeowners, through a very long and methodical process to get them to understand that they need to find the funding or agree to our no-interest five-year payback program. And they're picking up the tab on their own to pay the difference because they have no other choice to get to results. So we continue to persevere at the federal level, winning as much as we can. And you saw the size of some of these homes. It's pretty crazy to see how we get this done, but we're getting better.
Yes.
And I have to brag on Aaron. Aaron started out in the Health Department, and then we stole her for emergency operations, and now she can walk the dog on helical piles. And she is one construction super agent right now. So she's learned a lot in this business.
Well, Aaron, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Aaron, thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Mark, thanks for coming over, too, buddy. Okay. Let's go on with Doug in the arena.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon. Pam's gonna pull this up for us, but I'll go ahead and kind of jump into the conversation and make a couple of acknowledgements. And I'm sure Patty, I see Alex, and I'm sure Patty Phillips will slide in here in a minute. This is, as you all know, been a very much of a team effort. I see John O'Neill, our bond counsel, in the back as well. So we've certainly got the folks in the room that can answer questions for you all for anything that I can't handle for you. I'd also like to acknowledge Andrea Kilmer, who is, as you all know, the CEO of the ESG Companies, but more importantly for us, the head of the USM team, and she'll certainly be in the audience this evening at six o'clock. Should y'all have any questions of her? My role tonight is really to do a couple of things, certainly for council, but also for the public at large. And what I'm gonna do is take a few minutes and go back and just review the basic business deal. Obviously, we're here tonight talking about a change in the plan of finance, but it's important for folks to understand what the deal was back in December. And then I'll review the request that USM has put forth, and Andrea stood before you all a couple of weeks ago and laid that out for the public as well. And then talk to you a little bit about the draft resolution that's in front of you and concentrate on Exhibit A, which is those conditions of support, which I know, based on some conversations that council members have had with the manager and myself and one or another, we're gonna go in closed session and have a little bit of conversation about maybe some either modifications or at least clarifications of those, but just want folks in the, in the audience to understand what we're talking about. So what I've said before with this slide, y'all have seen it a number of times, but if you want to take the arena deal and put it on one piece of paper, this is essentially it. And it really is this idea that it is a privately-owned, privately-managed, privately-controlled arena in Virginia Beach, which is certainly a unique model. Our role in this transaction is to provide the land under, that sits under the arena, to provide the infrastructure that supports the arena, but there's also, what we all remember, we call the off-site infrastructure, which is the infrastructure, in many cases, leading into the arena, particularly on 19th Street and Bird Neck. But also to provide, you've all heard me talk a lot in the last two years about the BUT4 taxes and the revenue streams that come out of that project, but we provide those revenue streams back to pay debt service on the project. You'll remember that the term of the lease went to sixty years in December, and so that necessitated the involvement of the Virginia Beach Development Authority. So when the time is appropriate and the financing is in place, we will transfer the land to the Development Authority. They will execute the lease between USM and the Development Authority, and then that land will come back to the city, subject to that lease. We've always talked about, and this is an important piece, that the land in this deal, our land, is subordinate to their financing. And we talk about the BUT4 taxes, and those are the taxes that I'll highlight in a moment that are generated inside the building, but we're also putting 1% of the hotel tax back toward debt service. And in the early years, that's approximately $3.2 million. And again, 76.5 million dollars worth of infrastructure, but really 46 or so supports directly the arena, and then the other 30 or so is that off-site infrastructure that I mentioned. And I'll talk about the tip fund again in a minute, but all of that, really everything we're gonna talk about tonight is, in terms of our obligations, are funded through that tourism investment program. USM's obligations, again, are to find the money, and that's what we're here talking about tonight, to build the arena and to operate the arena. You'll remember, we talked a lot last fall and last winter about risk and control, and that as we shifted private sector, risk to the private sector, there was certain control that you also give to the private sector that's different than if it's a completely publicly-owned facility. And so our control, if you will, is they are required to obviously build the arena, largely in accordance with the plans that they have showed and will show to us. And then they've got to maintain and operate that arena to certain standards, and the standards are really about performance. You've got to have at least 20 shows each year of 7,500 or more people, and then we want to see at least 450,000 people in total paid attendance. And then we had a lot of conversation, you'll remember, about sort of how do you make sure that the facility stays up to standards that we can all be proud of? And what we landed on was this idea that there would be comparable arenas, and our consultants helped us identify the arenas in today that are in Lincoln, which I obviously visited and talked a lot about, the Pinnacle Bank Arena, Tulsa, and Jacksonville is those comparable arenas. In terms, just to remind everybody again, and this is a little bit unclear, uncertain right now, because we don't know what the final term will be. Right now, we think we're talking about a 33-year term of finance, but the taxes that are generated in that building, you can see them up here, they're the real estate tax, the personal property tax, BEPO, admissions tax, which obviously would be a big number, local sales tax, local meals tax, and a portion of the state sales tax that ends up in the early years being a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, goes back into, back to USM, back into that arena fund that we established and we talked about that ultimately goes back for them to pay their debt service. And again, on July of the year they opened, so at this point, if things stay on track, and we hope that, we believe they will, they would... and we hope that, we believe they will, they would look at opening in the fall of 2018, in which case, we would start putting our, really our, our hotel tax into the arena fund in July of 18. So, we, we start putting money in that fund in July of the year that the arena is projected to open up. This is, this is a really important piece here. You know, we have a, a cap in, in terms of what we will return on an annual basis. And certainly in the early years, we won't come anywhere near that cap. But that cap is $14.6 million. That was based on a 6% return on the loan that was contemplated at the time and 6% return on the equity that was contemplated at the time. Part of the, the conversation we've continued to have and have all had is that even with the, with the changes that we're contemplating right now, that cap will not go up. And assuming, you know, rates are gonna be lower, and we believe they will, that could, could in fact come down. You've seen these numbers before, but one of the things that we talked with the liaisons and in particular, it's important just to remind everybody of, of the kind of dollars that we're talking about that, that are flowing in and out of, of the project. And you can see what those taxes that I just talked about look like, but, but on, on, in the early days, we're talking about returning about $9.5 million worth of taxes generated in that building and the, the hotel tax. We will have some, some direct costs that we've gotta pick up. You remember, USM's got a, a payment, a fixed payment of a couple hundred thousand dollars that they pay for city services. We think that there will be some obligations beyond the arena area that will, you'll remember, we talked a lot about those, that those will be costs that we didn't feel like should be borne by the, by the arena, but we had to acknowledge that they are costs that, that we're not bearing today, and we think that's about a half a million dollars. And when you looked at the, the net fiscal impact that CSL and their team did, about $6.7 million after displacement and whatnot. So, it, and you look at the infrastructure that we're putting in, and again, that's on the, the full $76 million over 20 years, that'll cost us about $4 million. So, you've got costs of about $7 million, all borne on an annual basis, again, all borne by the tip fund. And you remember, we talked a lot at the Convention Center and a lot at, in this room and a lot out front about the tip fund, reminding everybody of, of what it is and what goes in there. But the, the, the short answer is, you know, a fund that was established years ago to build facilities for, for residents and particularly for tourists at the oceanfront, and it's funded things like the Convention Center. So, that's a, a quick overview of where we've been and where we were in, in December of 15. So, the current proposal that, that Andrea Kilmer laid out for you all a couple of weeks ago and is really a, a domestic bond issue as opposed to the Chinese bank loan. And so, there are some, some, some advantages and, and considerations that we need to talk through. It's a bond issue that would be written, underwritten by Ziegler, which is a group out of Chicago. It's important to note that while we're talking about the Virginia Beach Development Authority issuing these bonds, which is no different than the, the bonds they issued recently for Westminster Canterbury's expansion, they do not create any additional obligation for the city or the authority or the Commonwealth that are, that isn't already baked into, into this transaction. Would expect those bonds to be placed with private investors. We don't know yet who they would be or how many they would be. It could be one or it could be several, it could, but in all likelihood, insurance companies, pension plans, things like that. You'll remember, a lot of attention, a lot of discussion late last year about the, the Chinese lender, the foreign lender. And so, one of the things that this does is it takes XM Bank out of the deal. And frankly, that takes some of the, some, some pretty significant concerns out of the deal. There was a lot of conversation in, at the end of the year about one of the requirements with, with XM is one of their, their priorities, just like our XM Bank, Export Import Bank is to sell Chinese goods. And so, that requirement to have a certain percentage of Chinese materials in the building obviously goes away. What I would call some of the, the uncertainty of, of dealing with the, the foreign lender wasn't good or bad, it was just something we hadn't done before, and that, that uncertainty obviously goes away. So, there's a substantial benefit, and I think we've seen that in some of the public reaction to removing that financial, that foreign lender from the transaction. That change in and of itself does not require an action by council. That is not what we would consider a, a material change to the transaction or to, to this deal. What is, is a significant change is the, the change in the debt-to-equity ratio. So, we stood up last year, and once I'll talk you through that a little bit. The, the transaction at that point in time was gonna be what was a more typical loan to all of us, $170 million of borrowed funds of debt and $40 million of equity. So, a $210 million project or transaction, if you will. The new structure really is significantly more debt and less equity. And, and in doing that, in borrowing that additional money, there are certain things that the bond, that we believe and, and USM believes and, and Ziegler has told us that the bondholders or the bond purchasers are going to require. And those include things like a debt service reserve, capitalized interest, the, the cost of issuance, borrowing that money upfront, a general and administrative reserve. It's, it is still to be determined what those exact amounts are, but the, the current indications are those would total something in the order of 30 to 40 million dollars for, for those expenses. And so, that is a, a, a significant increase in the amount of debt and a decrease in the amount of equity. So, that is this last bullet, that, that's a material change, and that is what necessitates or would necessitate an amendment to the development agreement. And the reason I say would necessitate is we've still gotta see, once we go through this and assuming you all agree to move forward, we have to see what the final offer and proposal or, or, or financing is from Ziegler. So, the, the liaisons felt like a picture was, was, would be helpful in all this. And so, the left-hand side is really to show you where we were in December of 2015, and then where we believe we're, we would land approximately here in July of 2016. So, what Patty has put at the top for us is just really the, it's just a sources and uses of, of funds chart. Here's the, here's the money at the top, what it looked like in December, here's what it looks like today, and it's really just a picture of what I just walked you through. So, in December of 15, the proposal was $170 million of debt, $40 million of equity for a $210 million total. Though, the uses of that money was $200 million to build the facility and then $10 million of working capital again for a $210 million transaction. Today, when you look over at the, the far-right column, debt of approximately $230 to $240 million. Again, we don't know the exact figures of those categories that I laid out for you. Pre-development and, and equity of $10 million from USM, which puts you a total dollars of somewhere around $240 or $50 million is what we think currently. Again, what is that money used for? $200 million of it'll be used to, to build the arena. And then I've put sort of to be determined in these other columns, because we don't know how all that's gonna break out, but in essence, you've got $30 or $40 million that will cover those expensive, those expenses for a $240 to $250 million estimate. Our investment really doesn't change, but, but it's important to note, we, the, the amount of private equity was a material inducement to, to the, the investment that we're gonna make, that, that we're gonna put in this project. And just to remind you of what that was, again, the, the land in the deal, which has a current value of about $6 million, $6.1 million. Infrastructure improvements that I talked about of $76.5 million. And then a, the hotel taxes and the taxes generated out of the arena, the, the nominal dollars, that's the, just the absolute dollars that, that go in, and there are projections is over that 33 years with total $438 million. And at, at a 4% rate, has a net present value of $229 million. So, some considerations in the next couple of slides, and then we'll take questions. Where were we in December? The requirements that USM had were to contribute the $40 million in equity, go get the $170 million from the overseas lender. And then the reason, part of why we're here right now is bring back a commitment letter for the financing by the fall of this year, essentially September 9th, with two possible extensions. One of the things we're, we've, we put in your resolution, if you all decide to move forward and, and, and approve this this evening, we've gone ahead and said we would grant, you would grant those two extensions and put their, their obligation to bring the commitment for the, in this case now, the bond financing would move to December, excuse me, would move to November 8th. And so, that we would have, if we'd stayed on the same course, the manager had the authorization to, to grant those extensions. So, we thought it just made sense while we're all here, let's just bring it before council and the public. And there has clearly been the, the appropriate good faith effort and the appropriate progress made to, to recommend continuing that. And then their commitment at that point, once they brought the financing in place, was to close on that financing within 10 months. So, this is, again, some considerations for you all. The, the new structure, I mentioned this earlier, eliminates the overseas lender and a lot of that uncertainty, a lot of the concerns that frankly, some folks in the, in the community had. We'll talk now about the conditions of support and the, the satisfaction of those conditions, which is Exhibit A in your resolution, would protect the city's interest in this project in the near term and, and will also protect the ongoing contributions to the project. We talked about the fact that those, those, the, the debt service reserve, the, the capitalized interest, those other categories that, that were, were not in the original proposal with, or the original structure, they do add to the overall cost of the project. So, we need, we need to acknowledge that. And therefore, the, the amount of total debt for the arena and the city-owned land goes up. So, this is, we've taken Exhibit A, and I'm gonna show you Exhibit A in two slides is the last thing, but frankly, just broken it into, into two slides because it's hard, hard to see on, on one slide. But one of the, the conditions of support or that you're considering tonight would be that the, the maximum amount financed would be $200 million for construction or the guaranteed maximum price, which frankly, whichever is less, plus that capitalized interest, debt reserve, all the things that we talked about earlier. This drawdown basis has been, we've had a lot of conversation about that, and there's different terminology that's being used of step-up rates and drawdown bases and those sorts of things. And I'd say to you, don't get too hung up on that. The point is that there, there are different models or different, where they won't be borrowing all of the money at once. If, if they did, then, then that number would go beyond the 240 or 250. So, we've said we wanna make sure that, that that doesn't happen. That the amount financed would not include any money that, that's already been spent or Andrea told you, Andrea Kilmer told you a couple of weeks ago, that will also would not include a development fee. I said this earlier, there'd be no change in the annual cap, the, the maximum amount of the, the debt that, that we would return in terms of the taxes during the 33 years. This is an, this is an important one, that complete an independent financial feasibility study. So, that's hiring a third-party firm. It's part of what they've gotta do is, is their underwriting and their due diligence with the, with the bond underwriters, but that we would be able to see that, which is really an assessment of the value of the project and the value of the revenue streams. And then that the, the bonds would carry an investment-grade rating from one of the free, one of the three major rating agencies. So, you can see the ratings there, but essentially, you're talking about triple B minus from Moody's Fitch or Standards &amp; Poor. And we're gonna have, I think, there's been some conversation about that in the last week or so that I think council wants to, to, to get into, so I'm sure we'll chat about that a little bit. And then that the repayment of these bonds would be solely from the project revenues and essentially be the, 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 the deal that we agreed to earlier, and that it would not create, as I said earlier, a general obligation of the Development Authority or the, the state or the city for that matter. And that all the protections, all the rights that we had in the original deal would stay in place. So, then this final slide, I know it's difficult to see, all it is, is a repeat of the, the previous two slides, but really it's for, for folks at home to see. You know, we've got the resolution that says all the wherefores and wherehases, and, but at the end of the day, it's these conditions of support that, that we think are important and, and folks to, to concentrate on and that we'll, I suspect, talk some more about. So, with that's...
Do we have any questions or comments? This will be discussed also further in closed session. Questions or comments? Doug, that ain't fair much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Good job, Doug. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, any counsel comments? Yes, sir.
Yeah, just a point of privilege to introduce Dr. Nasib Khalil, a former resident of Virginia Beach, Regent University grad. And he lives in Youngstown, Ohio now, and he wrote a book on effective economic development methods for municipalities. And he did a lot of coursework here, you know, working on projects for the city of Virginia Beach and referenced Virginia Beach in his book many times.
Well, doctor, congratulations. We're very proud of you. Thank you. Barbara?
Just a couple of points from the Ag Advisory Commission meeting last night. A couple of sessions ago in the open mic, you had a presentation from Mr. Dawson about the coyote issue and asking for a bounty. The Farm Bureau also, and the, and the Ag Advisory Commission share some of those concerns. And so, the Farm Bureau is proposing that they would include in their state resolutions requests to the state that game and inland fisheries include Virginia Beach in their bounty program. And they would request that we also included in our legislative package. Delegate Knight was there last night, and he seems to be supportive of this, but that kinda seems to be the way that might go. Another issue that the Farm Bureau is, is asking that we look at has to do with the land use taxation evaluation for, you know, the assessment of, we have since the beginning of the program, used the recommended amount that is developed by a group called CILAC, which does this throughout the state. It's only a recommended amount, but Virginia Beach has used it. However, they're getting to see some issues there, and so they are proposing that we adopt a policy that we would either use the CILAC or rather the $1,800 per acre that we have as our ARP valuation for ag land or the CILAC recommendation, whichever is left. And I know this is a very complicated thing in two seconds. So, what I am going to be asking is that the city manager with the budget office look at this proposal, of course, city assessor's office look at it, and city attorney's office look at it and bring us back a recommendation.
Great. Thank you very much. John, did you have something?
Yeah, I wanna talk a little bit about Oyster Trust a little bit. And two things, one I wanted to talk about quite a bit in fact. One, I think there ought to be some acknowledgement of Mr. Donnie Edwards. Gentlemen, if not for his efforts, we wouldn't know we didn't have a plan, we wouldn't know we had a problem. And that gentleman deserves to be recognized for his efforts. It took him from October until January to get us to acknowledge we didn't have a plan. So, I think he should be acknowledged for that. Second, I think Goddard did a fine job in going through and seeing all the stuff and in the system and the looking, and I've read through all that documentation, sat down with the lawyers for hours to look through all this stuff, where the process failed. One part of it I don't like is that we are, which I'm not gonna vote for, to reward someone who did work without a valid contract, with no history where there was a constructive change or some constructive contract driven by a communication of a city employee. They took it upon themselves to execute and do expenses of $60,000 where there is no legal liability of the city to pay. And I don't know how in good effort, absent some finding that there was a constructive or implied contractual relationship, that we can pay someone for work they did at their own volition. It's an unusual precedent that we're setting, and I just wanna disassociate myself from it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
Well, just a fun one. I was able to go invited down to the oceanfront for the Brian Chase summer concert. It was really nice and was good to see that the lead guitarist and the drummer were from Virginia Beach. So...
Very good.
Had a great time there.
Other questions or comments? John, I, I respect the comment you made about someone finding this problem. I respect the audit. But we also have a lot of good people trying to do good things, and I think this was part of something too. So, I just...
There is good stuff happening, but works up in a payment without a legal obligation.
But I do believe you have a moral obligation sometime, you know, in good faith. I really do. All right.
It was approved by council. I thought, I thought it was all approved by council and so...
We approve, there is, we will talk out front. I will. I'll be so tall.
Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2.
Do you wanna do the consent?
Oh, yeah. I thought everything was going on there, but I guess it's not now. All right. All right. Go ahead, Mr. Vice Mayor.
All right. Under ordinances and resolutions, anybody have any problems or issues with them?
And you'll note on number five, I'm abstaining, please.
I've got that. I'm abstaining on number seven.
I'm going to vote no on two.
No on two.
No on two. All right.
Can you vote no on seven?
No, I just, because if you notice all those funds, how they're laid out, they're not laid out specifically for that specific contract. I'm just stating that while I have no problem with the authorization of spending, I am opposed to the disbursement of funds for non-contractual...
But you're on consent, though.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
I'm voting no on that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Subsequent motion wouldn't pass anyway.
If not, on anything else, under planning, while our enterprises, Ray Adams Jr., Lynn Haven, Mr. Wood?
There's no speakers on this one?
No speakers on anything.
Yeah, then that should be fine.
Two, Iglesia Christina, Christiana Nueva Vida, 118 Associates LLC, Kempsville, Dr. Ross Hammond.
I'm all right with that.
Three, Essala Aqua Barra Lane, conditional use prevent for a family daycare center in Centerville.
Good to go.
And four, Christian Brothers Automotive Corporation Children's Hospital, the King's Daughters.
That's fine, sir.
All right.
So it would be a quick, good, good.
Yeah, and four.
Right. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711A. Code of Virginia is meant for the following purposes: publicly held property, discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion and open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A 3 Princess Anne District. Public contract discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms of scope such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A 29 Arena Proposed Amendments to Development Agreement. Personnel matters, discussion, consideration of, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointments, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A 1. Council appointments, councils, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees to have a motion.
Second.
Call for a roll, please. Arena first.
ARP.
ARP.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Dr. Ross Hammond.
Aye.
Mr. Ern.
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson, your verbal aye.
Mr. Wood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Stasso.
Aye.